Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning and welcome to this September 1st meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. If you picked up one of our agendas, you are treated to Commissioner Kalo's favorite saying, "Early is on time, on time is late." He beats us up every day that we're not on time. A thought for today, "Silence is often misinterpreted, but never misquoted." Thank you, Joyce Parks. We have two proclamations today. The first is proclaiming September as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. Elaine Georges is here as Executive Director of La Cotta to receive this. In fact, they're so important to us that we have two of them. Where, yeah, okay Elaine, thank you. It says, "Whereas as many as 63 percent of Americans say that their lives have been impacted in some way by alcohol and/or drug addiction, whether through personal experience or the use by friends or family, and whereas through a serious problem substance abuse is a treatable health problem, and whereas of the 12,600 estimated substance abusers in Lorraine County, only about 2,400 persons have sought local publicly funded treatment annually, and whereas community members willing to seek treatment deserve an affordable range of treatment programs which surmount the barriers frequently encountered, and whereas to recognize and celebrate recoveries their families and healthcare providers, and to educate the public, and whereas to help achieve these goals and to promote restoration of health to those in need and those who support them. Now therefore it be resolved that we, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, do proclaim the month of September 2005 as National Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month in Lorraine County. Be it further resolved that the people of Lorraine County are asked to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme, join the voices for recovery, healing lives, families, and communities." We'd like to give these to you Elaine, and I believe you have a few comments you'd like to make, tell us about your activities going on.
Thank you Commissioners. I accept this on behalf of the individuals and family members who seeking get help to combat the disease of alcoholism and other drug addiction. The national theme is "Join the Voices for Recovery for Healing Lives, Families, and Communities." It's all of us, we're all impacted, and we could do a lot more. This is a really good month to celebrate what used to be silent. If you got help, you went into becoming anonymous about it. No more. We need to proclaim that we can get better, treatment works, and people recover. So again, I thank you for that, and Commissioners, I thank you for your ongoing recognition and support. We do have one event, and there are flyers up there. On September 17th, we will have a 5K Run Walk. Families, there will be family activities, and you're all welcome to come. It's gonna be at the Days Dam Pavilion of the Lorraine County Metro Parks. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for that beautiful facility, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you Elaine. One more second. Okay, thank you. The next proclamation is declaring September as National Preparedness Month in Lorraine County. Oh, there you are. Tom Kelly, our EMA and Homeland Security Director. It says, "Whereas the Department of Homeland Security and the American Red Cross cross-world cosponsor National Preparedness Month 2005, a nationwide effort held in September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools, and whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and encourage individuals to take action, and whereas families across America need to create a family disaster plan so that each person knows what to do, where to go, and how to contact loved ones, and whereas September 2005 National Preparedness Month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about preparing for emergencies, including natural disasters and potential terrorist threat, and whereas this is the second annual National Preparedness Month. First was held September 2004 with a coalition of more than 80 organizations and all 56 states and territories held hundreds of events and activities across the nation, and whereas National Preparedness Month brings together an amazing coalition of partners to make citizen preparedness a priority for every city, I should also say township and village. Every neighborhood and every home across America, Homeland Security is a shared responsibility. This month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about ways they can prepare for an emergency, get an emergency supply kit, establish a family communication plan, and become better aware of threats that may impact communities. It will also provide them with several opportunities to volunteer or get first aid or CPR training. Now therefore it be resolved that Lorraine County Board of Commissioners hereby joins in declaring the month of September as National Preparedness Month in Lorraine County and urges all residents of Lorraine County to learn how to be ready for the unexpected." You have comments? I'm sure Tom, thank you very much.
I'd just like to mention Louisiana, just a quick second here. We've received numerous calls the last couple days about people wanting to donate goods and things and have them taken down there to Louisiana. The best thing you can do right now is donate money if you want to do a ordinary drive to donate money. Donations management, I'm sure someone from the Red Cross will tell you, is a nightmare, especially when something is going on down there. It tends to become a rummage sale for people to want to get rid of their clothing, et cetera. Pick a charity, the Salvation Army, the Red Cross, it's responding down there. If you want to do a drive, gather up money and give them a check, do it that way. That's the best thing you can do right now for those people. They'll buy what they need for them. Thank you.
Thank you Tom. A third proclamation we have, I will just mention, this is for Joe Dean DiMarco, who's retiring after 20 years as an employee of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, and this is recognizing her. That takes care of the proclamations. Now we'd like to turn to the drawings, and I would like to introduce Dan Billman, our Lorraine County Solid Waste Director, who will tell us just a bit about what we're giving away.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Everybody hear me? I want to thank Commissioners for giving us the opportunity to do this this morning. We had a sign up for three recycled plastic chairs at the, our event, we just got to, within Wellington at the county fair. The first prize is a glider, the second prize is a rocker, and third prize is a, just a chair, armchair. Very nice, they're all made out of recycled material, 100% milk jugs. And these chairs come in different colors, we've got one that's green and a couple that are beige. So at this time, the Commissioners are gonna draw the prizes, first, second, and third. Betty, you get the honor of doing the first prize.
I can't have it, huh? I wanted that.
No Chuck, Chuck said he might buy one for you, but you wanted that other one, so...
I wanted it lighter. Pictana. Pictana? Roger Driver.
Roger Driver. And we will be calling these people later on.
Who's gonna take that? You?
Second prize is going to be the rocker.
I don't want to pick my own name and then I'm gonna have to...
Commissioner Kokowski will, Kokowski will do the drawing, and the winner is...
Patricia Griswold.
Patricia Griswold is the winner of that one. And third prize is the stationary chair, and it will be drawn out by Commissioner Kalo. Okay, thank you Commissioner Kalo. Jen Kane is the winner of the last chair. And again, I wanted to thank everybody in the county and that participated in this drawing. We had a wonderful county fair, and this year we had all departments in, under the Commissioners, in that tent, and I think it worked out good. We had thousands and thousands of people come through there. They were strictly amazed at the county departments and what they did, and the talk around the tent there was amazing with, with the constituents that had come through there. So again, thank you Commissioners.
You're welcome. Thank you Dan. I would like to commend Dan and all the departments that were at the fair. We had a wonderful tent this time, it's the first time that we've had this array, and we had our Lorraine County Community Development Department, our Lorraine County Transit, Lorraine County Dog Kennel, Lorraine County Solid Waste, our EMA and 911, and our Lorraine County Golden Acres, all together in one location. And we had a nice, solid floor to walk on, so when it rained, we didn't care. The other thing we had there was a bell, and Sandy put the bell together in 2003. There was a bell casting, and we had some bells left over, and so we decided to give one of the bells away. So Sandy, would you draw the winning bell? It had to be a registered voter, we're gonna check this. Lori Taber from Rosedale and Amherst. That was gonna be mean. Wrong, thank you very much. And Mayor Piscura from Sheffield Lake, come on down here. When we had the bell casting, we gave a bell to each of the communities, and for whatever reason Sheffield Lake didn't get their bell. So Mayor, you got your bell now, okay? And I think there's a pin and there's some other stuff, so better late than late. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of the fun stuff. Now I think we will go to resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Number one, county services bill.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
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 So moved.
Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp, Kalo.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
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 Transfers.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp, Kalo.
Aye.
The base of the petition.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Kalo.
Aye.
Calp.
Aye.
Requisition.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp.
Aye.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
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 Bill.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County.
There are four actions on the summary sheet, I'll move for approval. Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp.
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize various salary increases for Larry City Unit Cali Ford, effective July 1905, for Russell County County's two fifth share. One, Martin H. Evans Jr., bailiff, by weekly rate from $726 to $766 in 48 cents. Alan D. Wack, bailiff, by weekly rate from $747 in 78 cents to $766 in 48 cents. And Richard Schwartz, magistrate, by weekly rate from $1,049 in 88 cents to $1,108 in 48 cents.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, clerk.
Aye.
Calp.
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the Commissioners' meeting minutes and waive the reading of the same for June 30th and August 11th and 18th, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
A decision on the Type 2 annexation petition of 227.810 acres from Wellington Township to the Village of Wellington. Attorney Stephen Bond is agent for the petitioners.
Madam Clerk, would you read the summary that you prepared for us?
An expedited to petition and map were filed in the Board of Commissioners' office, received by the clerk on July 19th, 2005, for the proposed annexation of approximately 227.810 acres in Wellington Township to the Village of Wellington. Letters were issued to Mark Stewart, Lorraine County Auditor, and Ken P. Carney, Lorraine County Engineer, asking for review and accuracy of the petition and map, and there is no requirement to send these documents, but did so as an information status. Resolution number 05-626, adopted July 28th, received and generalized said petition. July 27th, County Engineer reviewed the proposed annexation, and the two parcels are adjacent and contiguous to the Village of Wellington, and the legal description does follow the plat drawn by Pogomire Design Group. August 1st, 2005, the Village of Wellington passed the following ordinances by declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 2005-33 concerning the incompatible land uses and zoning buffer relative to certain lands owned by Lorraine County Metro Parks and proposed for annexation of the Village of Wellington. Ordinance number 2005-34 consenting to proposed annexation of certain lands owned by Lorraine County Metro Parks to the Village of Wellington. Ordinance number 2005-35 indicating the services the Village of Wellington will provide upon the annexation into the Village of Wellington of certain lands owned by Lorraine County Metro Parks. August 3rd, 2005, Wellington Township, our resolution number 05-145 objected to the proposed annexation of territory in Wellington, filed July 18th, 2005 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 709.023D, and there is no hearing required.
Mr. Ennis, do you have comments for the Commissioners?
Commissioners, this is an expedited to annexation. What the Commissioners need to do is make a determination whether the seven conditions set forth in the statute are met. I believe the clerk has indicated that all the technical requirements regarding the petition have been filed. We have to make a determination that all the persons who signed the petition are the owners of the property located in the territory, and they are all the owners, that the territory does not exceed 500 acres, that it has a contiguous boundary with the village of 5% of its perimeter, that it does not create an unincorporated area that is completely surrounded by the territory to be annexed, that the municipality has submitted an ordinance agreeing to provide certain services for the area, and that no street or highway will be divided or segmented so as to create a road maintenance problem. And I believe the clerk has indicated the ordinances regarding the services have been submitted.
Correct.
I, you know, we don't have to have a hearing, I know Attorney Bond is here, I don't know if he wishes to make a statement, perhaps not.
Mr. Bond, where are you? Did you wish to make a statement, a brief statement?
I would like to.
And Rebecca has the microphone. It's up here.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. As has already been indicated, there are, basically, this is Type 2, and I'm sure you're all familiar at this point with Type 2. It's procedural, there's a series of items that have to be checked off. I think if you go through that list, you're gonna find, as the clerk has already indicated, that we meet every one of those procedural requirements. There's no test as there would be in a regular annexation as far as what is the good of the territory and how is it being served, that's not the issue here. The, we're only talking about two parcels, and these are two parcels owned by the Metro Parks. This is woodland now, it will remain woodland in perpetuity, it's for the Metro Park reservation, and there are no plans for any particular development of this property, so you can feel assured that there will be no adverse effect on any of the territory. And while the township trustees objected, they didn't indicate any specific basis for an objection or any violation of the statutes which they would have to have demonstrated in order for their objection to have any bearing on the determination. So if you go through the entire listing of the requirements, as I said, I think you're gonna, you're going to find that absolutely we have met every one of those, and therefore, under the statute, I believe you have an obligation to approve the requests at this time. If there's any question as far as how the property would be used or anything, we do have the village administrator here, and to the extent that he can, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. You stated that there are no plans for development in, on that property, but plans do change, and there's no guarantee that that will stay a metro park. Dan, Martin, and the Metro Parks do a fantastic job, but if the plans change and development comes in, that's my concern.
Well, and I appreciate that. The reality is that there is no development that is planned, there's a 50-year-long commitment that's already been made by the Metro Parks to the village, so the village has an interest in assuring that, at least for the next 50 years, that it remains a metro park. And of course, the building that's gonna be built there is a substantial expenditure that the Metro Parks already are committed to making on that property, that I believe they're gonna start construction next year sometime. So for anyone's foreseeable future, all it's gonna be is a woods. That issue aside, under the terms of this particular kind of annexation, the expedited Type 2, how it's gonna be used in the future is not a legal issue. So I certainly appreciate your concern. I have to say, from a legal standpoint, it can't be considered by you in deciding whether to approve this.
And I don't like expedited annexations. The first one, I don't like this one either. I don't think, if we don't have a choice on, on the matter, it shouldn't be brought before us in the first place. That's my position on that. Is it possible to deny this annexation on the grounds that the property is too large, Mr. Ennis? Because you're, you're annexing this property basically for sewers, and there's not gonna be much use for sewers, a couple bathrooms, maybe?
The statute, all the statute requires is that it not be more than 500 acres, and in this case, it's 227. So there is no other specification that you have to be able to look at in terms of size.
So, Mr. Ennis? However, she did direct her question, Mr. Ennis.
Yeah, I'd like Mr. Ennis to answer that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
That is correct, Commissioner. As long as it's not over 500 acres, the size is not an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. I do believe that Virginia Haynes, Wellington Township trustee, signed the sign-in sheet and asked to make a comment. Virginia, if you'd like to come forward and make a brief comment.
I want to thank the board. Is this coming through okay? I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak at this time. My name is Virginia Haynes, and I'm a Wellington Township trustee. The Board of Trustees believes it is in the best interests of the township and its residents to object to this petition to annex approximately 227.810 acres. Resolution number 05-145 was passed by the trustees at their August 3rd, 2005 regular meeting. As a trustee, I am also requesting that the Board of Commissioners and the prosecutor examine the ordinances passed by the Village of Wellington, in particular, the sections that state that council finds and determines that all formal actions relating to the adoption of the ordinances have been taken at open meetings of council, that the deliberations of council and its committees resulting in such formal action took place in meetings open to the public in compliance with all statutory requirements, including the requirements of Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ohio Revised Code 121.22 refers to the Open Meetings Act. As you well know, it is based on the principle that citizens must be able to observe the operations of their representative government. Mary Beth Derakito, a Huntington Township trustee, and myself went to the village's emergency meeting to observe the passing of the ordinances needed for this annexation petition. We were the only ones in attendance in council chambers because the meeting was held an hour earlier than what was advertised in the newspaper. So I'd like to challenge the legality of those ordinances passed by the village council in addition to the challenges indicated in the Wellington Township Resolution number In addition, the Metro Parks is a great addition to our community, and that's not the issue here. The Metro Parks is a beautiful way to preserve nature, relieve stress, and educate. People enjoy the parks so much that they are willing to pay taxes to continue the upkeep and growth of these parks. Nevertheless, it is my belief that the Metro Park petitioner and the Village of Wellington failed to prove where the annexation of these 227.810 acres is in the best entrance of the general welfare of the public. Through the petitioner's own words, he said, "The annexation isn't necessary for the parks' creation." As for sewers, Wellington and Huntington Township trustees both passed resolutions offering to save the park system and the taxpayers' money by paying $30,000 for a self-contained unit. There are several ways to dispose of sewer, sewage, and they all include toilets that flush without the tap-in fees, monthly fees, or contracts that bargain away our township property in our sheriff's department. The request for this annexation is unreasonable and arbitrary, benefiting only the village who will have an open door to future annexations of Wellington Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Mr. Ennis, can you respond to the comment that Ms. Haynes made about the meeting?
Virginia, could I clarify what you're saying? Then you're saying the meeting was noticed at being at a particular time?
It was noticed for 9 o'clock AM, and Mary Beth Derakito and I were there at 9. No one was there, we went to the clerk. They didn't have, Karen Webb was not there, they had someone sitting in, and she had said that the meeting was held at 8 AM.
Well, I guess we'd ask if the Village of Wellington wants to respond to that.
To the best of my knowledge, it was advertised for the correct time, which was 8 o'clock. The meeting was held at 8 o'clock, but in any event, from a legal perspective, my position would be that if anyone wanted to challenge the validity of that ordinance, they would have done that in court. This is not the form for doing that. As far as the record that's in front of you demonstrates, the ordinance was passed and was certified to you by the council clerk as having been appropriately passed, and I think on the record that's in front of you, that's the basis that you would have to make your decision on. The issue, all the commentary about whether or not this particular use is in the best interests, again, my position would have to be that, that would be an appropriate question if this were a regular annexation, it's not a permissible consideration when we're talking about an expedite.
Thank you, Mr. Bond.
May I, Mr. Bond, are you, are you indicating that if we have evidence that the ordinance is not properly enacted, that we, we don't have any ability to inquire into that?
You're not, well, yes, that is my position, because under the statute, you're not entitled to have a hearing.
No, but we are entitled to inquire as to whether the conditions have been met, and if it's not a validly passed resolution, how can we find that the conditions have been met?
Well, the only, in my position, would be, the only basis for determining that would be if the individuals complaining had come forward to court and had made that kind of a claim, and have successfully had a court determination that in fact it had not been properly passed. As far as your official records show, given that you're not entitled to a hearing, the record in front of you shows a valid ordinance certified to have been duly passed by the clerk, and as far as your record shows, that's what you have in front of you, and therefore that requirement under the statute's been satisfied.
Mr. Ennis, may I make a suggestion that we put this in abeyance until this matter can be resolved?
Well, unfortunately, we are, let me just take a second here. I understand from the clerk, on the 44th day of the...
If I could also add, it seems to me that the kind of objection we're talking about, this was held at an emergency meeting of the council. The objection that's being raised, I don't know that would even come to the level of being the basis for attacking the validity of the ordinance, even if someone had gone to court. The notice requirement is, is intended to inform the public, but there is nothing that I'm aware of that indicates that that would be the basis for invalidating this ordinance.
I certainly think it's a technicality though, Jerry, is it not?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I said, "I certainly think it's a technicality," is it not?
Well, if an ordinance is not adopted at an open meeting, I mean, it's invalid. I'm not sure I agree with counsel that, I understand we do not have to have a hearing, but that doesn't mean we can't have a hearing, and we can't inquire into something to determine whether or not it's valid or not, and if, I mean, if somebody comes in here and tells me that some entity passed an ordinance, you know, at the coffee shop, and just because we get a piece of paper, I mean, I don't think we're going to accept that as an ordinance.
If you could do that, you know, under a statute that doesn't provide for a hearing, then what's to stop every annexation that comes forward? Someone coming in and saying, "I don't think that was passed validly," notwithstanding the paperwork that you have in front of you, and every annexation would be held up on the basis of someone making that claim, notwithstanding no court has ever been faced with the allegations, let alone having reached a conclusion as to those allegations. Given that you're not permitted to have a hearing, in my view, given that this is not a hearing, given that there was no sworn testimony presented, for you to draw a conclusion as to the validity when you have an officially certified ordinance in front of you from the clerk of council of the village, it seems to me you're going beyond what the statute provides on an expedited.
I just think that we ought to be able to resolve the issue, and you're saying that we have to render a decision today. If legal counsel would agree to a continuation of this matter, could we continue the matter until we can resolve the issue, Jerry? I think it's in everybody's best interest to lay the facts on the table regardless of what they are.
Steve, there's nobody here that can clearly testify whether or not that meeting was held at the proper time?
You mean to tell me there's nobody here from Wellington that can testify to this?
Yes. Bob Doopie is here, the village administrator.
It would have to be, it seems to me it would have to be the clerk or one of the council that could testify as the...
Jerry, excuse me, wouldn't this be an issue, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I thought you were done. Jerry, wouldn't this be an issue between the township and the Village of Wellington if the Village of Wellington gave us a certified ordinance that was passed legally? That's what the court...
Well, and I think that's what Mr. Bond is saying. We have a representation from the village by the fact that they have in their ordinance a statement that they complied. I mean, that's their statement. That's their representation to us that they have complied with the sunshine law. I mean, I have a little concern that we have a witness who came in front of us, and, I mean, there's a little bit of difference between somebody just walking in and saying, "I challenge this," or "I think you did something wrong," and a person who's coming in and saying, "I was there at the time this meeting was supposed to be held, and it didn't happen at that." That creates some concern to me.
Would you identify yourself by name?
Yes, I'm Helen Dronesfield, and I'm on the Wellington Village Council.
Thank you.
The meeting in question was held at eight o'clock in the morning. It was advertised at nine o'clock. It was advertised on cable, and it was also put in the Alaria Chronicle, and it was put in at the wrong time. It was scheduled at, the paper and the, our local cable station said it would be at nine o'clock, and we held the meeting at eight.
What is the village's responsibility there, Jerry?
Steve, do you know whether that was an emergency meeting or not?
It was an emergency. It was an emergency meeting because we needed to meet in order to meet the time requirements to get the ordinance here.
An hour? An emergency meeting, you had to do it an hour earlier? I don't think...
No, the emergency was established, but the time was...
It was prior to our regular meeting.
But why could you not have held it at nine o'clock, as scheduled, as it was scheduled?
To be honest, I'm, this is the first time I'm hearing that there was an issue.
Well, this is definitely an issue.
Thank you, Helen, for coming forward and clarifying that issue.
So you had a regular meeting at nine o'clock?
No, the regular meeting would have been a totally different day, two weeks before, and that's when the first reading was held, this was held in order to pass the measure.
Do we know what information was given to the newspapers? Do we know if it was given to them correctly as being eight o'clock, or?
I don't know.
It appears to have been a clerical error.
Well, is it the representation from the Village of Wellington that the meeting was legally and properly held in this?
That's what the clerk says.
Okay.
We're waiting for our legal opinion, Mr. Ennis.
Well, we have a representation from the village people that they believe that their meeting was lawful, and they complied with the law. I understand what Mr. Bond is saying, that we are not a court of law, and it is not up to us to make a legal determination whether their meetings are valid. They've made a representation that it was.
So what is our role, then?
We don't have to make a legal, but we can make a moral decision, and I would make a moral decision based on the fact that the meeting was not held when it was supposed to be held, and the documents that we have are not credible, and I would move to deny the annexation.
I'll second that motion, but not on the same basis as Commissioner Kokoski. While Mr. Bond has said this is a procedural matter, and I accept that, I believe that this procedure that was outlined to us by the Ms. Haynes and Ms. Derakito and was verified by Wellington Village Council member is one of the criteria that is not met. So I will second that motion.
Commissioners, if I may interrupt, we need to do one of two things. We either need to make a motion to approve the annexation based on a finding that the seven conditions have been met, or we need to make a motion to deny it, but we need to very, be very specific as to what conditions have not been met. If I'm understanding correctly, and it is your intent to say that we do not have the appropriate resolutions under F of the conditions, then we need to be very specific about that.
I will move that the annexation be rejected based on the fact that we do not have the appropriate resolutions as outlined in the testimony given today, and I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Jerry, will that hold up in court even though their clerk certified it was a proper meeting and the ordinance was passed lawfully?
Well, again, I don't think there's been any case law regarding this issue. I understand the point that Mr. Bond is making that, and it's unfortunate we're on the last day here. I'm concerned that if we do not decide it today, and we try to continue this, the law may say that by not acting, it automatically was approved. So I'm reluctant to say to the commissioners, "Let's continue this," to get more clarification on this. You have a representation from the municipality that this was validly passed. We have a statement from one of the trustees that, based on her observation, she does not believe the municipality complied with the open meetings law. If you find as a factual determination that you do not think they complied with the open meetings, and you think that's clear enough based on what you've heard, then that's what you're seeking to, that's what the motions are to deny at this point in time.
Mr. Doopie, village administrator?
Yes, Commissioners. If the township trustees felt as though the Village of Wellington did something illegal, they need to go to a court and have a judge rule that it was illegal. This is not a judge. This is not a courtroom. Mr. Ennis, it's not a judge. It's been certified to you by the Village of Wellington. This is a lawfully passed ordinance. I don't see where you have any options other than to pass it. A judge could tell you, or tell the Village of Wellington, it acted illegally, but not a trustee from the township.
Thank you, Mr. Doopie. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Under emergency management, Homeland, yeah, Homeland Security Office, approve and adopt the Lorraine County mitigation plan?
Plan, Tom, I have the microphone here. Oh, you, okay.
Are you finished, Theresa? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You finished?
We're ready for you, Tom.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Just the first one, the mitigation plan.
Okay, thanks. I'm out of order here, so I have to. The mitigation plan was a requirement the federal government passed, the Federal Mitigation Act, a few years back. It requires local governments to develop a list of future projects in advance that would divert, alleviate disasters before they happen. They want, actually, they want the locals to fix things that are reoccurring so they don't have to keep putting money towards problems in the area. The act requires participation of all municipalities and villages. Participation by the townships was voluntary. When we put our committee together, two townships, Carlisle and Eden Township chose to take part also. The rest of the county was represented by the planning committee of Mr. Twining and myself. The plan is a federal requirement for the county to continue to receive federal disaster mitigation dollars. Participation in the planning process will allow municipalities to apply individually for mitigation grants. Since Carlisle and Eden Township also chose to participate, they too can apply individually. The remaining jurisdictions will have to apply through the county if needed. The state of Ohio has reviewed our plan, and given concurrence, all jurisdictions in the county will have to pass it locally, and it will now move to the federal government for final concurrence.
That's it?
That's it.
Didn't we, weren't there two villages that didn't?
No, we finally got them to participate. Yeah, they're going through the process right now, passing it.
Otherwise, they would have had a...
Right, they would have been out. If we would have had a disaster flood problem where mitigation dollars would be available afterwards, like the Thomason property where we bought it out, where Raising Hill House is sliding into the river, they would not be able to apply for those.
Okay, I'm glad that you finally got them in. There seemed to be some problems there.
One of the problems was jurisdiction, the mayor was ill and hadn't got the proper paperwork, so everything's been taken care of now.
Great.
Thank you.
Jim, your microphone's out.
Okay, we are all set then. This is our recommendation. I'll also move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Approve and adopt the continuity of operations plan for departments and buildings under the direct control of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. This plan establishes structures and priorities in the event of the castra...
Catastrophic.
Credit.
Catastrophic.
Okay, thank you. Loss of buildings under the direct control of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. You have comments, Mr. Cordez?
Well, I think Mr. Kelly has some comments, too. We've been working on this quite a while. We actually had an outside consultant working with us, too.
Hundred percent grant to pay for it, too.
Right. Not to mention that we had some availability of additional dollars for Lorraine County to do this. We have a lot of buildings and a lot of facilities, and while it's one little paragraph here, this was no easy undertaking, just like the mitigation plan wasn't, wasn't an easy undertaking, and we need to have these plans, as Tom indicated earlier. All we have to do is look south to what's going on right now in New Orleans to realize, needing to be prepared to deal with things. The COOP plan is extremely important because the commissioners enjoy certain emergency powers under the Ohio Revised Code, and getting back up and running and exercising your authority for the betterment of this county in the event of a disaster is hugely important. And Tom, you can just take it from there if you like.
It's a requirement. Probably within the next year and a half, every jurisdiction in the county will have to have a continuity operations plan. We're about a year and a half ahead of the ball here, so. I'd like to thank the county departments. They put a lot of time and effort into this. The outside consultant came in, and she sort of put him on the pulpit and made him produce. We've finally tweaked it enough that we feel it's adequate. Mr. Cordez has looked at it. We had a meeting, and we're ready to go with it.
Thank you. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve and adopt the emergency operations plan. This is a complete rewrite of the existing all-hazard emergency operations plan of Lorraine County.
It's your big day.
I actually have more time up here than Mr. Twining does. That's...
Is this a Tom Kelly meeting, or?
Yeah. Recently, it's been away on TV, too. The emergency operations plan of the ELP, we're going to have an acronym class here today, I think, but it's been in existence for about 19 years. My first day here in November, or October of 1990, the director, Brian Nelson, at that time, handed it to me and said, "Here, this is your job. We need to redo our emergency plan." I've been doing that ever since. It's a requirement. Obviously, it's a work in progress at all times. There's been a lot of different federal requirements that have come through in the last year since September 11, with terrorism, that type of process. We had everybody come in, police, fire, ambulance, hospitals, the health departments. It went page by page, line by line, word by word, word to word, through this plan and rewrote it completely. It's been concurd with, okayed by the state, it just needs to go to the board for it.
Tom, for the public, who doesn't, you know, always get a chance to see things, explain what the emergency plan would do, how, in the event of, I don't know, a huge flood?
Well, it defines what our roles are at the county level, what we'll provide and how we'll do it, our resource management, emergency contacts, outside contractors, we need to bring them in, just our basic plan of how we're going to handle something if it happens. It's an all-hazard approach. It's written loose enough that we can use it in a snowstorm, a flood, a tornado, or terrorism act.
Those are like those calls I get from you at two o'clock in the morning when you say, "Well, I'm not sure we should open the center or activate the emergency operations center in the plan and so forth," but you're using that as a guide in various situations as to what resources are available to the county to combat whatever situation they're confronted with, correct?
Right, and addresses what we'll do at the county level and how the local jurisdictions can access our capabilities.
Okay, thank you. For a fine job, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Cordez. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Approve and adopt the National Incident Management Systems Plan. This provides a consistent nationwide template to enable all government, private sector, and non-governmental organizations to work together during domestic incidents.
Here we go.
One more time.
Yes, this is it.
NIMS, which is an acronym for the National Incident Management System, was developed after September 11 due to problems they had. We're more apt to respond across state lines and federal lines across the country more than ever before. We've had a local incident management system across the country for years, but what has happened since now we have state and local and federal government all working together, we need to all play right together. And this National Incident Management System dictates how we're supposed to do that. One thing that's going to probably be a surprise to you, that in 2006, all the emergency responders are going through an orientation in NIMS right now. In 2006, all the elected and government officials will have to take that course also. So I'll be your teacher, and I'll be at your door to have you take your 25-question test, because if we don't do that, again, funding is tied to that on our homeland security grants, so if we don't have everybody take it, including Mr. Cordez.
Is that the one that we've been getting all the firemen and police to take?
That's the one, right.
We got to do that, too?
You're going to have to do it, too, and I'm going to grade yours personally.
We're going to publish your results, too.
We're not passing this one.
I don't think the results are public. I could make that.
We're going to make his public. Also move. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Again, thanks, Tom.
One last thing with Tom. Commissioners, I actually told Tom I wouldn't say anything, but I want to anyway. New Orleans has called, and they're calling for Tom, so he's on a list of people that will respond nationwide in some national disasters. Now, he may not need to go, but they have contacted locally, and they may need some assistance. And Tom, maybe you can explain what that's all about.
About 10 years ago, when I became director, they put us on a national call-out list if we were ever available. I'd never been contacted before, but there was an email that came out yesterday, just unavailability, that type of thing. Probably wouldn't be right away because they're still working through emergency response problems that they obviously have, but it might be down the road where they have to have someone make phone calls or work at the center or something like that. So it might happen, might not happen.
I just think it's nice that they've called and they've asked for you.
Everybody wants Tom.
It's the Tom Kelly Show.
He's in charge of all emergencies. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Under Job and Family Services, approve a blanket resolution authorizing payment of mileage, parking, and tolls when emergency travel is required outside of a county by an employee of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services in the maximum of 15... two zero one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize various services to be purchased using Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, Child Care Quality Funds for state fiscal year two thousand and six effective September first, two thousand and five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and six, and will not exceed twenty-five hundred.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize various services to be purchased using Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, Child Care Quality Funds for state fiscal year two thousand and six effective September first, two thousand and five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and six, continuing education training, ninety, nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, child development associate training, nine thousand six hundred and sixty, health and safety training, four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight, and provider pre-certification training, twenty thousand three hundred and eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter an administrative service contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for fiscal year two thousand and six. This contract is effective retroactive to July first, two thousand and five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and six, in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under transit, enter into the LPA Federal Local Let Project Agreement with ODOT for the renovation and restoration of the historic New York Central Train Station. County Commissioners will be the lead agency and establish the responsibilities and procedures for the administration of such renovation and restoration.
And I believe it should say authorize the administrator to sign.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, and I have one question before I move for approval. Have we engaged a contractor? There's also provision for the contractor to be named. Are we not that far yet?
We're not that far yet. We're, this is, this is actually the money that was approved by NAWAC that goes to ODOT. It's been a bit of a learning experience for us on dealing with these dollars, and I did send some correspondence to the board that I hope you all had an opportunity to review, indicating that we would not be able to use previous investment dollars as a match, and this would require a cash match on these funds. I'm appreciative that NAWAC and ODOT is allowing us to position the funding a little differently than our original request, so that we can do some mitigation inside the building with those dollars. Originally, the dollars had been approved to work on the parking area adjacent to the building, but we had other pressing needs that took priority over those, and we've been getting nothing but cooperation and help from all our partners, and I would encourage the board to approve this, and our project is definitely going to be seeing a lot of action this fall.
Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Chлен Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Chлен Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline credit card not to exceed two hundred, and the agency's Master Card not to exceed twenty-five hundred for the year two thousand and five.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under sanitary engineer, certify delinquent sanitary sewer council, Lorraine County auditor for collection on the tax duplicate for the year two thousand and five, collection in the year two thousand and six.
I have a question. Will there be a letter that goes out first before these are certified? Because there certainly are a lot of them. Mr. Conney, I saw Jack Januzzi was here. There you are, Jack.
It's already...
The letter?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Also move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Authorize Lorraine County auditor to levy special assessments for water line maintenance against all property within various county sewer districts for the tax duplicate year two thousand and five, collectible in the year two thousand and six.
Commissioners, at this time, I would like to request that we hold this issue until next week. Mr. Conney and myself have been working on this, and we've had, actually, we've had some discussions with the commissioners concerning water rates and assessment rates, and the need for maintenance and repair dollars and improvement dollars, and we haven't concluded those discussions. The unfortunate situation is that we only have one more meeting before we will need to certify this to the auditor's office. It has to be down there by the second Monday.
Second Monday on September.
Second Monday. So we need to get together and come up with a game plan. If you recall, we've explained in the past to you some of the problems we were having with our water lines, and that we weren't bringing in enough funding to be able to properly do the maintenance and repairs, and we have an aging infrastructure, so we need to make a more forceful recommendation to you next week concerning these rates.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
I know you won't, hey? Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your patience.
Okay.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator?
Commissioners, the transportation improvement dollars that we've been talking about receiving, I've been in touch with the folks down at ODOT, and they're concerned that the Transportation Improvement District, while we have bylaws and we're functioning, we don't have a federal ID number to administer funds under. It's like chicken and egg, I keep telling them, we don't need a federal ID number, because we never had any money, so now that we have money, we probably need to get a federal ID number, but they have finally agreed that the county is, you know, fully capable of administering the funds for the Transportation Improvement District. So I need to send off a letter indicating that the county will take fiscal responsibility for the administration of the money that will be going into the Transportation Improvement District. This is a good thing. We don't have staff in the Transportation Improvement District. We need, the county needs to provide that support, so I will be sending that off on behalf of the board. It doesn't require a resolution, I just wanted to inform you, since there are a lot of transportation issues that are gonna be discussed today, that we're still working on it and trying a way to make sure that that money gets here. So ultimately, it will get here, and ODOT, once again, has been cooperative in working with us on making sure that we get the i's dotted and the t's crossed, so I'll do that this week on your behalf. Other than that, I know we got a lot of, a long session after this, and I have a lot of issues for next week, and I know we'll spare one commissioner from that, from next week, but be prepared for a much longer agenda, because we didn't meet last week, and I have a few things from there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Mr. Ennis Assistant, can I press, Gary?
Just briefly, Commissioners, there was scheduled for September fifteenth a hearing down in Columbus regarding the local government allocation issues. I've spoken with several of the attorneys involved in that, and it's my understanding they have spoken with the hearing officer, and although we don't have an official entry, the hearing officer has indicated that that matter is going to be continued, so that we will not have to send any representatives down on that day. And I know there are a number of other entities here that are involved either directly or indirectly with that litigation, so before you go down to Columbus on the fifteenth, you might wanna check with your legal counsel or representative involved in that matter. Probably will be, they're gonna try and reschedule it in November, I believe, if they can find room on all the attorney's schedules for that, so.
So we don't have to do anything now at all on the fifteenth?
Not on the fifteenth, no.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner Laurie?
Guess I would direct this maybe to Mr. Cordez. Is there anything we can do here locally as county commissioners towards our state legislatures regarding these expedited annexations? That we can, you know, have them revisit that? And I just don't see how this benefits the communities, and bringing these issues before us, and we don't have any say-so, it just really bothers me. I'd like to know what we can do about that.
Well, you know, uniquely, the change in the legislations that came in the last two years or so was a compromising process between the townships and the cities and villages. Nobody came away the complete winner. There was a lot to give on both sides, because everybody felt that the prior regulations were too untenable. I don't think anybody was, is very happy with all the outcome from that. And Jerry, you have a little bit more information on that than I do, as that process unfolded, but is that kind of your take on it, too?
Well, that's correct. I mean, that, the legislation that resulted was the result of probably five, six years of going back and forth on what to do, and it was a compromise. And unfortunately, as we've seen this morning, sometimes when you come up with compromised legislation, and everybody's sort of happy with it, and it gets enacted, they're, and I'll be frank with you, I've said this before in our hearings, and we'll probably see it again, there, when you have new legislation that is this complex and this extensive, there are gonna be a number of holes in it where questions are gonna come up, and I try not to be evasive, but quite frankly, there, as I've explained before, when issues come up, the usual thing that a lawyer does is go back, look at the case law, look at the decisions, and have some frame of reference in which to give you advice. All of these are new questions and new issues, and there isn't any case law out there to advise you on, so what I'm advising you, and obviously, Mr. Bond has a different opinion than I have, you know, we're giving you educated guesses on these sort of things, but sometimes you have to do these things in practice, find out what the holes are, and then get back to our legislatures and ask them to try and correct those, and that's probably, if you wanna try and change the law, we need to get back with our representatives in the legislature, advise them of the problems that we're having with these, and unfortunately, with any new legislation, there's always gonna be new things, and sometimes the only way to correct those is have, have a judge and a court come back and say, "This is, this is how you handle it."
The, I too agree with Mr. Ennis that regardless of whether it's a hearing, I think there's a due diligence responsibility on the board to, to act on information as presented to them in a responsible manner. That said, to more fully answer your question, I believe that if you have particular concern with portions of the law, that we can present them to the County Commissioners Association and start a productive dialogue at that level and see what other counties are doing. Our association will engage in these type of discussions if we engage them.
Well, I know I would like to do that, and possibly my other two commissioners. So since there isn't a lot of case law out there, I'm just gonna continue to do as I think is right until that case law is in effect, and if we don't change any laws.
And if you, when you have an opportunity, if you present me with, you know, some ideas of what you think the difficulties are, we can communicate that with CCAO and ask them. We have, every year, CCAO comes out with a legislative priority list of things that they wanna work on to improve what we think needs to be done with certain legislation that's out there, certain regulations. Now, that said, sometimes the county ordered association will feel differently, sometimes the township association will feel differently, so they have, also have priorities they're working on. But the very first thing we need to do is present them what we think are the problems, see if it's a widespread issue, but we can start those discussions, so if you would just communicate me in the future.
The problem is, you're giving me legislation to vote on, and you're telling me I have no choice in the matter. I have a problem with that.
Well, one of...
That's what we need to change. If we're not gonna be able to make a decision, these people in the townships and such are looking to us to represent them, but you're telling us that we can't.
But one of...
So that's the problem.
One of the desires, and I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to...
Not blaming you, Mr. Cordez.
I know, I know, oh, I know that, I know that, huh? The, I can feel the passion. One of the issues was, though, there was a conscious effort by various parties to eliminate the commissioners' power in this matter.
Then eliminate us, exactly.
See, so what happens is, when they don't like what the commissioners do, they move to dilute the power of the commissioners, and then, when it doesn't suit them, then they want the commissioners to make a decision on something their way, that their power is to make, because they diluted that power. So the very people that you're sometimes trying to assist are the very people that stripped away your ammunition to assist them. There's always a conscious move by most associations at the state level, through their lobbyists, to dilute the authority of the county commissioners, because they're unhappy with certain powers and decisions they've made. So you may find the very people that you're looking to support here will be the very people that won't support you in reinvigorating your authority to assist them.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Commissioner, if I might just also add, you know, one of the purposes and one of the things that the municipal corporations got out of the new annexation law was the expedited procedure, because one of the things they wanted to get away was, was having to go through years and years and years of litigation, and I certainly can understand the frustration of the officials of Wellington Village here, but again, the problem with the expedited procedures is they're so short that we get presented with issues that we don't even have time to continue it, to take a look and research, and find out whether we're doing the right thing, so, you know, there's always a downside to everything you try to do.
Would the board support on behalf of Laurie, myself, communicating with CCAO and asking them to see if other counties are experiencing difficulty with this portion of the legislation?
I think it's an ongoing discussion. It only took them seventeen years to do this. I mean, why would we hurry with anything else? Sorry for the sarcasm, but it's true.
Okay.
Commissioner Kallo?
Yeah, thank you. Long drawn out day, I can't wait for September twelfth and thirteenth for hearings on annexation. I'd like to thank all of our staff and department heads really helped us out at the county through, they did an outstanding job, and they represented us well, and I think we made a movement in the community, I haven't seen in a long time, from the Commissioners' office, I'd like to thank them very much. But since it's this transportation day, and we're talking about county commissioners associations, County Commissioners Association has asked all the boards of commissioners in the state to resolution endorsing issue one on the ballot in November, which basically fills in everything Ken's been working on, and the Board of Commissioners have been...
Put that microphone a little closer, like...
I'm sorry. Issue one.
I'm not sure it was issue one or his name. When you mentioned his name, he stood up.
Ken Conney, issue one. But it is a resolution endorsing issue one, we'd like to see it passed. It basically is a transportation article, helping the cities, townships, villages, counties build up infrastructure, road improvements, buildings, so when people aren't interested in looking, we're not going through a long, drawn-out process to find them a place to make home, so I'd like my Board of Commissioners, if I could get a second, on a motion to support issue one on this year's ballot.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
So I'd like my Board of Commissioners, if I could get a second, on a motion to support Issue One on this year's ballot.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a long day yet.
I know, this is just the beginning. I would like to thank you all for coming this morning to help me celebrate my 47th wedding anniversary, and I told my husband, Chuck, I'd take him out for breakfast.[453.43][453.43](applause) I'd also like to tell you that today, the commissioners sent a letter to Joe Roman from the Greater Cleveland Partnership, extending thanks to him for sharing information garnered from the Two Studies Commission to examine the statewide economic and social implications should casinos come to Ohio, and expressing our disappointment that Lorain County was not one of the locations considered, especially since our county, and specifically the city of Lorain, were in the forefront of the casino issue both in the 1990s and in the latest go-round. Our county's population of 291,693 simply cannot be ignored while debating this issue. And finally, I'd like to publicly commend the Grafton Pharmacy girls. Tuesday night, Grafton Village Mayor Sheri Shapansky and their village council recognized these girls who are state champions. And we took a certificate for each one of the girls and presented it to them. So I think they, in 2003, they won also. State champions from Lorain County, Grafton Pharmacy. Hats off to them. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, if you can indulge for a second, I didn't want to-
Are you talking again?
Yeah, I have an answer.
You had your turn.
But I didn't hear any of you speak to it, and I didn't want to take it away from you. I know that some people in the room know, but maybe not everybody knows about the update on the Quarry project, and-
It's in the paper.
Well, it was in one of the papers, but I know that there's various officials from the subdivisions that have been at the table with our Community Development Department trying to make this project a reality, and I thought maybe we could give Mr. Twining 45 seconds just to update us on where we're at with that project.
Apparently, some people-
Mr. Twining can't do anything in 45 seconds.
Some people know Mr. Twining. I heard the laughter over in that section.
45 seconds.
Are you starting the clock?
Two minutes ago.
We received a communique from Neil Pike, Trans-European Securities, late yesterday afternoon, that indicated that he has exercised the option on the Quarry project in Amherst Township, Brownhelm Township, and South Amherst Village. We want to thank all of those communities, and certainly the county offices that have helped with this project. We are moving forward with the next step, and certainly our consultant, David Hart, that the county commissioners provided, were an instrumental part on that, as well as Mr. Ennis. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Twining.
It's a great project. It's just another positive note in what's going on in Lorain County, Commissioners. And I have one question for Mr. Kayla. That issue that they just passed a resolution on, is that also a third frontier?
Yes, it includes a third frontier.
It includes the third frontier, so that's the, you know, we've put a lot of effort into working in cooperation. It's right that we're out here at the college, because we've been supporting Live for a number of years, that's working on the edge of the third frontier. So that's just another positive issue for Lorain County. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, your report.
The annexation on the public hearing will be held Monday, September 12th, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room for the regular petition of 226.13 acres from Carlisle Township to the city of Alaria. Also, Attorney Clerk, on behalf of Land Concepts Company, Inc., the petitioner has withdrawn the annexation petition for 11 acres from Pittsfield Township to the city of Oberlin. They anticipate a new petition to be submitted upon completion of a survey of the premises. And also, Lorain County Transportation Improvement District will meet next Thursday at 11 a.m. or immediately after the Commissioners' meeting. Does that board correspond?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
If you have a brief comment, we invite you to come to the microphone. Brief, we'd appreciate it. Okay. Seeing no takers, I move this meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Hold on.
Could you rephrase your speaker's area?
Yes. Would you come to the microphone, please?
Is there a list there, Rebecca, for today's meeting?
I'm sorry.
You can come up.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Wilhelm, and I'm from Avon Lake, Ohio. I just wanted to let you know of my petition that I have as it relates to sexual offenders, and I hope that people in the county will go to my website, wwwstopohiosexoffenders.com. I wrote the governor taft in regard to sex offenders. If you've read, if you've been anywhere in the media, you've seen all the, that's been going on with children and senior citizens and what's happening. And I sent the governor of Ohio a letter, and he said that there is nothing in the Ohio General Assembly at this time as it relates to stiffer penalties or stronger laws regarding sexual offenders. And my petition calls for an update of the laws and to create new laws. If you, again, go to my website, stopohiosexoffenders.com, you'll see, basically, I'm asking for mandatory sentences of first-time offenders, a national registry. According to dear Lorain County Sheriff, Mr. Stemedi, Lorain County alone, as of August 3rd, has 465 sexual offenders. That is, if they were nice enough to register with Mr. Stemedi's office. I think that our law enforcement does a tremendous job in everything that they do, but I think that our governor, with this petition, I have 1,000 signatures in less than three weeks. I hope to get 100,000 signatures and take them to the Ohio Speaker of the House, and with your help, we can ask the governor, who in his letter says, "Yeah, write your legislator," that he and our legislators will create laws and update the present laws to help our law enforcement and to protect children 14 and under and senior citizens 62 years and older. Again, my website is wwwstopohiosexoffenders.com, and our county commissioners have a copy of my petition if you don't have an internet. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Anyone else? Then Teresa, you're in the midst of calling the roll.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
The meeting of the commissioners is adjourned. Give us five minutes to rearrange the head tables up here, and we'll begin with the engineer's summit.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash. Litter lowers property values, and it's costly to clean up."
Keep Lorain County beautiful, put the lid on trash.
Welcome to Golden Acres, Lorain County's best-kept secret. In the heart of Lorain County, we are nestled on 22 acres of rolling hills in Amherst Township. Our rural-like setting is centrally located for everyone's convenience.
Since 1997, when the Golden Acres tax levy was voluntarily abandoned, the home has been self-sufficient. We currently serve private pay and Medicaid residents, are in the process of becoming a Medicare-skilled nursing facility, which will enable us to provide a wider range of service to the residents of Lorain County.
Serving Lorain County for over 100 years, Golden Acres will continue to strive to provide the highest possible degree of health, social interaction, and emotional well-being.
While selecting the best place for your loved one is never easy, many families take great comfort in choosing the friendly, home-like environment of Golden Acres. Certified by the Ohio Department of Health as an intermediate care facility, Golden Acres participates in a Medicaid reimbursement program. The facility anticipates certification as a skilled facility. Golden Acres has 82 intermediate care beds, 20 of which are for specialized care of Alzheimer and related dementia patients. Designed by the Golden Acres Gerontologist Consultant, the Alzheimer unit meets the needs of dementia residents who are prone to wandering and not mindful of their safety needs. Small by today's large facility standards, Golden Acres is a full-service, patient-family-oriented facility, operating 24 hours per day, seven days per week, under the guidelines of the Ohio Department of Health. Respite care is also available, ideal for those who are caring for their loved one at home and need a break from the 24-hour vigilance. Golden Acres provides residents a variety of services. As a four-season facility, Golden Acres celebrates each season with attractive decorations throughout the facility. In December, holiday festivities abound. Spring is a time of renewal, and celebrations include the annual Mother's Day tea.[1131.24][1131.24](music) In the warm months, Golden Acres residents and their families enjoy congregating outside on the patio or in the gazebo, spending lazy summer afternoons and evenings in the shade. Fall brings hazy days and cool nights, Halloween and Thanksgiving, bonfires and hayrides. A monthly newsletter, Golden Acres Chit Chat, contains entertaining articles and information relevant to all residents and family members, including the monthly activities calendar. Golden Acres also schedules visits from dental, podiatric, optometry, audiology, and psychiatric services. Butician visits weekly, and barber visits monthly.
While no facility could take the place of your loved ones at home, our caring staff, residents, and their families will strive to make them feel at home and a welcome part of our facility.
Hey, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby, and Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that, so we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, it's like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, because I was just so upset, but we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble, because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes, when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually. He was, he had, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway, so I feel safe with Salem. You know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorain County Dog Kennel on Haddaway Street, just south of the Lurie City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified, so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorain County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territory.
into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridge-